Okay, I'm this is gonna be a video walkthrough of my decision-making process regarding people running for elected office. And I'm going to look at the candidates for city council and the Democratic primary here in Mount Vernon. And I'm going to link it to this project I'm working on, which is called my candidate scorecard, which is a, a decision-making process for rating candidate attributes. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay. So right out of the gate, I'm not a Democrat or Republican. So I can't in New York state, I can't even vote in this primary. But still I take an interest and this is really an exercise in just going through my, my process, how I, how I do it when I am voting. The second point out of the gate is that criticisms are not personal. Uh, I know it's hard to separate out some, some people I think are better at putting criticism in, in context. And not taking it personally, others have a very difficult time doing it in every criticism they take personally. And that causes them to, you know, engage in retaliatory behavior or rhetoric, which I think is not good. But you know, all I can do is say it's not personal. How could it be if I don't know somebody personally? So it's really, I'm trying to judge public behavior, public language and put that and consider that with respect to attributes that I think are important for doing a public service job. Attributes for solving social problems. So it's not a commentary on personal attributes. Someone could be a terrible elected official and a wonderful friend, uh, you know, and family member. The second thing I want to just make note of is the fact that this candidate scorecard, and we'll get to that a little bit later. Um, the attributes that I'm looking at are, they're not an exhaustive list. Um, you know, probably you had 20 or 30 attributes that would be more closer to exhaustive. So this is really a sampling of attributes. It's designed to prime or stimulate uh, the critical thinking process. In this one, we're only considering five for city council candidates. I think there are 10 for the mayoral candidates. So my decision-making process unfolds like this. The first step is to gather evidence. I watch, um, you know, videos, watch meetings. I listen, of course, um, I read, I write. That's part of my process, taking notes. Um, and then even writing things up and putting it, making it public. I think that that helps me to, to understand what's going on. And then discuss with other, other neighbors in the community and family members as well. I try and consider what method I'm using to decide what I call, what I should say. This is, this is borrowed from American pragmatism. Um, the pragmatist C S Purse wrote a paper, you know, over a hundred years ago now. Uh, called, I think it was called on the methods of fixing belief. Um, and that has been very influential in my thinking about how is it that I come? And by fixing belief, it means how do you decide what to believe in the world? How do you fix or set it, you know, so that, um, that becomes a standard by which you operate? So how do you, how do we, how do you do that? What are the methods you use to do that? And Purse broke it down into four methods, authority, tenacity, a priori and science. The goal I think should be to shoot for a scientific approach to deciding what's true and what's not true about the world. So after gathering evidence, I consider that and you think, all right, well, do I, is there sufficient evidence to make a scientific determination? Uh, you know, or an approximation based on science? Um, or am I left to do it another way? And how do I feel about that? What does that mean? So I consider that method. I synthesize information, so I, I critically compare candidate attributes. I'm just going to briefly show you how, for example, I do that with candidate forums. So in this, in, in this election cycle for the Democratic primary, there were two candidate forums. There was one at Riverside Memorial Church, and then there was one at Greater Centennial. And I attended in person the Riverside one and I watched on Zoom the Greater Centennial one. And what I did was I took notes during those forums. And then afterwards I take those notes and I put them into a format like this. So you can see how the candidates lined up next to each other here. And I, I take my notes from their opening remarks. For example, how they answer different questions and I put them side by side. That, that helps me to, to sort of compare and contrast and synthesize my, my thought process about candidates. Um, and again, the whole goal is to get to the point where I, I can make a, a well-informed decision. So this is, this is an example of how I synthesize information. It, in 2021, I took it further. Um, I had a much more elaborate system, but time didn't allow me to, to do that. And, and what I did in 2021 is I put that out there for the community to look at. Um, I, but, but I didn't, I didn't have the time to do that this year. So, um, I did it for myself, but I didn't, I didn't put it out there. Maybe in the future I'll be able to do that. So that is, we're down here. So yes, I synthesize information so I can compare and contrast relative to attributes. And then I go to my candidate scorecard and I rate the candidate attributes that I have in the system. After that, I will repeat those steps until I'm comfortable with the decision and, and, and at that, at that point it's a go. If I were voting, that would be how I vote, not entirely. Cause remember the attributes, there are other factors. So, you know, I might have two candidates who are maybe one scores higher on the attributes I rated than the other. You know, but they're, you know, maybe within 10 points of each other. And then, but I might vote for the one who came in lower for things that are not in, in the attribute system. So, cause remember it's not an exhaustive list. So there are other, there are other factors to consider. Now, if there was a huge gap, if one person I rated, you know, a 90% and another person I rated a 20%, it's possible I could ultimately cast a vote for the person with 20%, but it's less likely that there'll be, um, other attributes out there that'll tip the scale in their favor. Um, so that's my process. What we're going to do now, I'm going to go through each candidate. Um, and, and sort of show you how I am evaluating the evidence that I consider and things like that. I'll give a few thoughts about each one and what it, how I think about it. I'll go in alphabetical order. There are four candidates. We've got Box Hill, Carter, Iberman and Thompson. So we'll start with Javon Box Hill. Um, so here, this is just a little bit of background information. This, he's never ran for office and he's never held office. Uh, he was a former assistant controller in Mount Vernon under Maureen Walker. Um, I think he had some, I think his father who, who is a, a, seems to manage his, his campaign was a, was a friend of Maureen Walker's. I'm not entirely sure, but maybe that's helped him get his foot in the door. I think he was an accountant before the assistant controller. He moved up there. He currently works for the county in a, in a budget. So I think he's doing a, he's like a budget analyst. Uh, or perhaps the budget analyst for the, the Westchester County legislators. Um, and he is endorsed by the Democratic Party. One thing that's noteworthy here is that as far as I'm aware, he's, he's never worked in the private sector. He's always been working in the government. The endorsed slate has been talking about consistency. We need consistency. He's never held elected office. We should be clear about that. Holding elected office is not at all the same as being an employee of the government. It's very, very different. Um, employees of the government may express that they work for the people, but they don't. They work for the government. They work for, there's a hierarchy, you're right. There's a chain of command in the government and it leads to elected officials. Elected officials in theory work for the people. They're elected by the people, although we all know there are massive problems with that process. This is not a reflection on Javon. I'd see, he strikes me as a very, very strong candidate. Um, given the limited, limited information we have about him. And I'll talk about the, the limited evidence we have in a second here. But so this, I just wanted to point out though, because he's talked about, and they're kind of using this, oh, can sit, keep things the same. We have to be consistent. He's never been in an elected position before. So he's the endorsed Democratic Party candidate. Seems to me like he's being groomed for a management position within the Democratic Party corporation. So what we have is we have interviews on Spotify and an interview with, uh, Atif Cole from the Mount Vernon News Center. The interview on Spotify, you can find that, I believe it was Spotify. It was a, I believe it was an interview for the Jamaican diaspora. And he was born, Javon Bucksel was born in Jamaica. His parents are from Jamaica. He's fully Americanized. He was, he was raised here in Mount Vernon, went to the schools here in Mount Vernon. But that's where that interview was. Other evidence, uh, the candidate forums, as I mentioned earlier, there was one at Riverside Memorial Church and one at Greater Centennial. That's pretty much it though. There's not a lot of evidence to go on for him. Um, so when it comes to my thinking about, all right, well, how would I fix my belief about, about whether or not to vote for him? It's really largely based on trusting what he says and what other people say. So in terms of those four methods, right? I showed the methods of authority, tenacity, a priori and science. Really the method that I think people will be using if they decide to vote for Mr. Boxel is the method of authority, right? The Democratic Party endorsed him. The leadership supports him. So therefore if you trust the leadership of the Democratic Party and you do what they tell you to do, right? Then you would be more likely to say, okay, I'll vote for him. That is the antithesis of free thought. Um, and it's, it's, I think it's a bad, it's a bad way for people to make decisions. Of course, we all have to, you know, if I go to the dentist or I go to the auto mechanic, I don't know anything about the, my car's engine and he tells me something is wrong with it. Uh, you know, I'm judging whether or not to trust him is based on how much of an authority I think he is. We take things like word of mouth of friends. We, we do it all, all the time. We, we, we don't base our decision-making on science, but we should aspire to do that. Um, and also, you know, so the other method is the method of tenacity, which is just because. So some voters will always vote for the Democratic Party endorsed candidate, no matter what. That's what they do, you know, they, they vote, uh, along the party line and they don't even look. They don't even really consider carefully the attributes of the candidates that they're voting for. They just vote for the party. So they just sort of blindly are loyal, um, and tenaciously cling to a position regardless of the evidence. So for me, uh, when it comes to rating his attributes, I'm going to be more likely to give him ratings in the middle because I don't really have a lot of evidence to go upon. Really the candidate forums and interviews are just talk. It's just things that he's saying. Um, and granted, I think the, I think the things that he's saying, he sounds good. I think he's articulate, the positions he stated, I like. So there's a lot of things that I like about him, but it is still just talk. So when we get to the rating part, you'll see my ratings are going to be more likely to be middle of the road for him. Lauren Carter. So Lauren Carter ran for city council in 2021. She's the former assistant clerk. I think she also worked in the planning department. She was an employee of the, of city of Mount Vernon for 17 years. She currently works for the MTA. Okay. So the evidence, we have interviews with, uh, Atif at Mount Vernon News Center. I did an interview with her and I took snippets from that interview and I put it together in a, in a couple of short, I think three short videos that I released. Part of my thinking around doing that, and I was cleared her, it's not an endorsement. Um, I was doing it because the party and party selected candidates have an enormous advantage. Just witnessed the press conference they had, I think it was on Saturday, the 24th, where all the political muckety mucks came out and gathered, right? They have the microphone, uh, in endorsing the party candidates. That gives them a huge edge. So I was doing this sort of get, just get more information out about, about Lauren Carter. I did the same thing with Axel Iberman, just sort of as a public service to help level the playing field a little bit with the party endorsed candidates. Of course, the candidate forums, but Lauren Carter has made comments before the city council. I've seen that there's a body of evidence from the 2021, 21 election. So there's more evidence to go on than there is for Box Hill, but still it's mostly talk, right? It's mostly, it mostly comes down to having to trust the things that she's saying because I don't have, um, more than that. I don't, there's not a lot of written documentation or, you know, she doesn't run something that, that would cause her to have a public profile where we can really evaluate her performance in that way, at least not that I'm aware of. It's mostly me having to trust what she's saying, you know, and putting that in the context of the body of evidence going, that I have going back to 2021 of the things that she said, similar to Box Hill, more likely to be in the, in the middle because there's not a ton of evidence. Let's go to Axel Iberman now. Um, actually he's now also never run for office, never held it. Contrary to the other candidates, he's not from around here. He was, he's German. He's also never worked in government. He's always worked in the private sector. He works in the film industry. He is a community activist. There's a, a lot of evidence around that. He's hosted forums. He's worked to organize. He, he's the president of one of the neighborhood associations, a very active one here in Mount Vernon. So yeah, that, that's, he's very, he stands in contrast to the other three for those, for those reasons. Evidence, interviews, he's interviewed on the Mount Vernon News Center with Atif Cole. I did the interview as I described with Lauren. I did the same thing for, for Axel. Candidate forums, comments that he's made before the city council. He's hosted community forums as the president of the neighborhood association. Um, he's written position pieces. He's got a pretty extensive, uh, presence on Facebook where he posts a lot of detailed stuff. So I've become friendly with Axel and that's important to acknowledge because I don't want, that potentially could bias my thinking on this. Um, I started getting active in the community a couple of years ago, started posting stuff. And when I did that, he reached out to me. I didn't know him, but he somehow found me, reached out to me. And so we started talking. So that's led to some socializing. My wife and I have had dinner at his house a few times. He and his family have been over here a few times to have dinner. Um, I've talked to him on the phone, uh, email. So I've gotten the chance to have one-on-one discussions with him. There's a lot of information about him. Um, that's more than just, you know, uh, what he said during interviews or what he said during candidate forums. This is because he's hosted things on a volunteer basis. He's been involved with his neighborhood. He's helped his neighbors out. He's followed through. Those are, those are, it's, that's more than just rhetoric. That's actual behavior. He's written things. So, you know, there are, there's a lot more, um, evidence that can inform a decision for, for Axel. And that can, that cuts both ways. If you like what you see, that it can help. If not, it's going to hurt. All right. And then Derek Thompson, Derek Thompson, he is the incumbent, right? He, he's currently on the city council. I believe he works at the school district. I don't know if he's had any private sector experience or not. I don't know. Um, I don't know the length of his tenure at the school district. I don't know that. Um, he's the, he's on the slate with Sean Patterson Howard and Javon Boxill. So he has been endorsed by the Democratic Party. Evidence, it's a lot easier with him. And it's job-based evidence. He's been on the city council, so I can watch those meetings, see how he votes. As the, he was the president of the city council for a while. And so he participated in the board of estimate and contract. He made votes there. Um, so I've, I've been able to evaluate him, his on-the-job performance. And then the candidate forums, got to see him in the candidate forums. Method of fixing belief for, for Derek Thompson, scientific method. Um, it's pretty, pretty much, I'm looking at what he's doing on the job. Now let's shift over to the website and, and walk through the actual ratings. Now we're over at the my candidate scorecard website. I'm going to log in and I'm going to rate the candidates. Um, I'm having problems with the login with Facebook. I, it's such a bummer. I'm trying to get people to use the system and my fear is that people have come and tried to log in with Facebook and got this, this error message. What this is, is I found out that I now need to add a terms and conditions to the website in order for Facebook to allow that people can log in with Facebook. So I'm, I'm going to do that. So it's not, it's not there just yet. So I apologize. I'm, so I'm going to log in. I can log in with Google. If you have a Google account, you can log in with Google. So once you log in, um, you can see the elections that I'm, that we're tracking. I'm going to go in order. So let's go to Javon Box Hill and click on Box Hill. This is the rating scale. You can just slide it along. Zero would be the most unfavorable view of the candidate and 10 would be the most favorable. You think he's, he knocks it out of the park. Fantastic. Five would be right in the middle. The first one is serving the public interest. Um, I think that he's likely at this point to focus on serving, uh, the interest of the public. My sense is to go in the middle of the road with him. You know, he, he's well spoken and he seems like he really wants to do the right thing. So I'll nudge it up. I'm going to, I'm going to go with this, maybe a six, um, or a seven. I think a seven is fine. I, I think he's going to come in and really want to serve the, the public interest. Transparency, you know, I've got to go middle of the road here. I know he's campaigned on that he's been in the room where things have happened. Um, that's not transparency. I don't, you know, I, I, I am an advocate. I don't like government keeping any secrets at all from me. Um, you know, I don't, I don't like the idea of paying into a system that then doesn't tell me exactly what's going on with my money. And that's all they have to do is, you know, make policies around, um, allocation of resources. So, um, I don't, I don't like, I don't like that. Um, and I don't know anything about, you know, how, how open, um, and Mr. Box Hill will be. So he's going to get right in the middle for me. I don't know. Fiscal responsibility, one thing that he said that I thought was interesting, and I don't remember which forum it was, but it was a question around holding people accountable, making sure this, we adhere to budgets, that we're being fiscally responsible. What he said was, and I'm paraphrasing here, it, it was that departments will generally ask for more money than they need. And so you have to be sensitive to understanding what, what they actually need. And his approach to gaining that understanding was to basically shadow what people are doing in departments to really learn a lot about what they're doing. That sounds great. I guess my only question about how that would work is, you know, the city council is a part-time job. So my assumption is he's going to continue to work at Westchester County. If he's working full-time at, at Westchester County in his current position, he holds that. I don't know when he's going to have the time to learn what the department heads are doing. He could, I mean, one thing you might say as well, as assistant controller, I already had a lot of exposure. Fair enough. So he'll bring that prior knowledge to it. So I, overall, I thought that was a, a good answer and showed a commitment to looking carefully at things. I, with that in mind, I'm pretty bullish. A seven is a good score for me. Uh, nine is a great score. I don't think I would ever give anybody a 10. So that's a pretty good score for me in terms of fiscal responsibility. Independence, unfortunately, I, I don't see that at all. I think he's unlikely to remain independent. He's endorsed by the Democratic Party. I think he's being groomed for a management position in the corporation. And so unfortunately, I think that he's not likely to be independent. But you know, maybe I'll be pleasantly surprised if he gets elected. So I'm going to go a little bit less than middle of the road, slightly unfavorable view of his ability to remain independent. Responsiveness to constituent concerns. I think he's likely to be responsive to constituent concerns. This is largely going based on trust. I, I'm, I'm going to go with a good score. I do think he's sensitive to people. I really do. That's, um, I hope I'm not delusional in that belief. This is one of those things where I, I'm not going on evidence. I'm going on more of a feeling about what he said. I don't like being in that position, but, uh, here we are. So I think he's likely to be responsive. And so that's it. So those are my ratings for Javon Boxill. Overall, right now he comes in at 60. That's likely where I am, 60. Let's go to Lauren Carter. So serving the public interest, similar to, uh, Javon Boxill, I have to go based on what she said. The influence of insiders and lobbyists on her will depend on who the mayor is. So I think if Sean Patterson Howard gets reelected, Lauren Carter is, you know, unlikely to fall prey to, or less likely to fall, fall prey to these influences. Andre Wallace wins, she may be more susceptible, but I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm sort of, this is sort of the speaking aloud process that I'm going through to figure this out. My sense is that she's got a good heart and she wants to do the right thing. Transparency, one thing in being the clerk, the assistant clerk and working in the city, she understands the New York State open meetings law. She's also expressed that, yeah, decision, the decision-making process should, should occur in public. So I think that, that Lauren Carter, you know, she's likely, this is again, this is a pretty good score for me. Fiscal responsibility, I think it's the same thing. I think, you know, don't have a ton of evidence to go on. One thing that she said in a forum that I thought was good was she talked about staff development. So one of the criticisms, I think, and I think it's valid of the city is it's, it's, it's solution to solving problems is to just hire more people. Um, that's not a solution that, that can, that can just create more problems if you don't know how to manage them. So I think a better solution is to develop the talents of your existing staff to help them improve their skills so they can get better at what they do and faster what they do, increase their productivity. So when Lauren Carter mentioned, we should be investing more in staff development. That was a nod to improving productivity. That really is a more fiscal, fiscally responsible role than just hiring more people. So I thought that was a good comment. And so on the strength of that thinking, I'm, I'm going to keep her here at a seven. Independence, it's so hard to say. So I think if Sean Patterson Howard gets in, Lauren Carter will remain, uh, pretty independent. If Andre Wallace gets elected, she may be less likely to take an independent stance against his wishes. I'm leaning slightly towards independence because I think the mayor, you know, Mayor Patterson Howard is likely to get reelected. I preferred if it, if I, I thought independence was, um, not contingent upon who the mayor was. But I don't, I don't, I don't think that's the case. I think there are outside influences that will impact upon, on her ability to remain independent. But again, I'm, I'm leaning towards favorability right now. Responsiveness to constituent concerns, you know, I don't need to say much about this. I tend to be leaned towards unless I have evidence to contrary that she's going to, she's going to help out there. So that's, let's see where she, she comes in at, my ratings are down here. She comes in at 68, slightly above Javon Box Hill. So they're, these guys are close. Let's go to Iberman. So Axel Iberman, um, serving the public interest. I think that he's likely to serve the public interest. And he's unlikely to fall prey to insiders and lobbyists. He's not an insider. He doesn't have inside connections. And he's expressed a disdain for, um, the influence of corporate lobbyists on allocation of public resources. So I give him high marks on serving the public interest. Transparency, have to give him high marks on that. You know, he's part of, he's on the board of the Committee for Open Government, which is a nonprofit watchdog group in the state of New York. That shows a clear commitment to transparency, not just in words, but in actions. He allocates his time to, to promoting, uh, the cause of transparency in government. Fiscal responsibility, good. Again, it's hard to tell. One of the things he said at this, at the, um, one of the forums had to do with, um, inflationary pressures on, on governments, you know, that as the costs of healthcare and the costs of goods and services goes up, since the government is a percher of those goods and services, um, everything costs more. And, you know, we have to be sensitive to that. Um, and so that might force, force up taxes, uh, more than he would, he would like. On the flip side though, I think, you know, you have to be sensitive to the people who are paying those taxes. And the same inflationary pressures are hitting them. And unlike government workers who often have a municipal, strong municipal unions, a lot of, a lot of workers outside of government don't have those union protections. We know unions have been, um, vastly eroded over the decades. So that means as inflation goes up, we know their salaries fall behind. So what happens is as taxes go up higher, if, if people, you know, we say private service workers, you're a waiter or a bartender or a landscaper, um, or a non-union, um, worker. Um, then, you know, you have less money in your pocket, um, to support yourself and have a quality of life. So it cuts both ways. I didn't hear any, he has talked about, um, the importance of, of assessing productivity instead of just hiring people. So I think those are good signs. So I'm, I'm, I give him a favorable rating on that. So that's where I stand on that. And then independence, he's going to get high marks for independence. It seems like along his path to, to running, he became a democratic, a local Democratic Party district leader. Leader should be put in quotes because I don't know what they're leading. Um, I think really what it is, is just by getting that position, they get to vote on who, um, the, who the party will support in advance of the primary. It seems odd that the party is selecting a slate before the primary. Um, you would think that it should be an open field of Democrats and that the party would remain neutral until the people have spoken. And then once the people have spoken through, uh, the primary, then they would get behind, uh, the candidates. I think everything has sort of been warped here because of the absence of, uh, of another party. There is no meaning. There is no meaningful Republican Party in Mount Vernon. One of the things that Axel did was he became a district leader. But then when the, the Mount Vernon Democratic City Committee was voting to select their slate that they would promote in the primary, he said, I don't want to be part of that. I don't want to run on a slate, so I don't even want to be considered for that. That shows great independence. Even though he didn't run as an independent, he saw that he had to run by being a Democrat. I understand that. That stand against, I don't want to be part of this at this point. I want to be independent. I think that shows good resolve. Responsiveness to constituent concerns, again, he's going to get high marks from me because he's doing it now. He's as the president of his neighborhood, Oakwood Heights, I think is the name, the Oakwood Heights Neighborhood Association. That is a constituency and he is responsive to those, the concerns of his neighbors. He's described, again, more than just talk, but engaging in behavior around the concerns of people in, in his neighborhood association, putting together forums so that they can become informed about topics, helping people get permits through the city. That shows a responsiveness to his constituency. Now he's going to move, if he gets elected, his constituency will be more than his neighborhood association. It'll be the entire city. But we have some evidence to support the idea that he will be responsive. So he's going to get high marks there. So my ratings for, for Axel Ebermann are going to be 86%. He's high. Let's go to Derek Thompson. Derek Thompson, the incumbent, serving the public interest. I think, I think he, I think he's likely to do that. I think he's, you know, I think he's got a deep commitment to the city. He's born and raised here. And I think he wants what's best for the city. I think that he's, he's not likely to be swayed by lobbyists. One of the things that I liked that he said when, when there was a question in, I don't remember which forum, one of the forums, there was a question about payments in lieu of taxes. These are like tax breaks granted through the Mount Vernon Industrial Development Agency, the IDA, to, to, to developers, right? And corporations, usually it translates into a large tax break for corporations who get them. He expressed that he's not a fan of pilots. That's good to hear. I'm not a fan of pilots either. So I think he's, he's, you know, he's likely to be, to serve the greater good. I do, so I give him high marks for that. Transparency, he's going to get low marks for me on transparency. Just one example is the Mount Vernon Animal Shelter fiasco. It seems pretty clear that there were discussions behind the scenes at city council and the mayor's office long before they came out and actually told the public. Nobody knew that beginning in September, the state had issued scathingly bad reports. And then ultimately it was in December that the state said, you got to shut it down. It's structurally unsound. We didn't find out about that until mid-December. That suggests to me complete opacity. So my, that was my, my big problem was locking the residents out of the decision-making process around a piece of critical infrastructure, which is an animal shelter. They could, in their, in their work sessions, they could have said, just a heads up to the community that, that we've gotten some bad inspection reports from the state on the Mount Vernon Animal Shelter. We've had some staff on leave and things have really fallen in disrepair and we're considering other options. Just keeping the public abreast is what transparency means. So that, so he's going to get low marks despite his catchphrase about what transparency looks like. He's going to get low marks for me on transparency. And fiscal responsibility as well. He gets low marks for me on that. I can give you two examples that inform my decision-making here. One has to do with the ambulances, using ARPA funds to get ambulances. I think it was the fire commissioner who came before the city council. And I think Daniel Brown asked her, have you done a cost benefit analysis on this? Because what taking on ambulance means is we're going to dump our contract with Empress, buy ambulances, and then we're going to have to hire staff. And whenever you take on staff, you take on big, that's a big cost that we're taking on. So when Daniel Brown asked, did you do a cost benefit analysis? And Ms. Norman said, no, right? They didn't do any. They all just went on and voted yes anyway. That, so it's astonishing to me, like, what was the point of even asking the question? Right? If you're going to vote either regardless of whether the answer is yes or no, what I thought would have happened and what, you know, to show responsibility, Derek Thompson could have said, well, look, I think, you know, we really need, need to see a cost benefit analysis just so we know what we're getting ourselves into. You know, what's a five-year cost on this project? When will it be break even? How does it get to break even? What are the social, what are the social upsides on this? That gets factored into it as well. None of that occurred. Instead, they just voted yes. The second one, it was a $24,000 contract that they voted through for the mayor to have a personal communications consultant. It was a guy who was a booster for the Mount Vernon Forward ticket and the mayor. And this is, you know, despite the fact that the city already has, is on staff communications department, no way that that was a good contract for the city to sign. Friends of Sean Patterson Howard could have hired him and should have hired him. That made much more sense than putting that cost on the taxpayers. Now, one thing, let's double back to what Javon Boxill said when Lauren Carter said that she'd be willing to take a pay cut. He sort of, you know, rolled his eyes at that as meaningless because it's so small. That is not a good way to think about being fiscally responsible. There is no cost that's too small that we should take on if we, if it's, if it's not in the best interest of the city. There's this, this sort of saying of death by a thousand cuts. Well, that's what happens to city government. People see like, oh, it's only, you know, you look at the federal government, oh, it's only a million dollars. It's meaningless. It's a drop in the bucket. Well, the bucket is made up of drops, okay? And there's no, there's never going to come a time where you're going to make a, a one-yard large killing, where you're going to do away with an entire department and save five or 10 or $15 million. The only way to save money is to scrutinize small costs and develop the habit of asking questions and without fear, no matter how small the cost. So I think it's, it's a, it's a, it's a bad habit to think that, you know, because it's only $24,000, it doesn't really mean, mean anything, so we might as well spend it. You know, it's okay. If you want to do that with your own personal finances, fine, but it's, it's wrong to do that with the finances of the residents. So he's going to get low marks for me on fiscal responsibility. Independence, he's going to get low marks for me on independence. I think that he is part of the Democratic Party Corporation and he is loyal to the party and he is loyal to the mayor. And I think it, it shows the opposite of independence. Responsiveness to constituents concerns, he gets high marks for me here. One thing that he does at city council meetings is he's responsive when people ask questions. My questions, maybe not so much, but other people, he's responsive to their questions. I've even seen where he has talked about going out and driving the city in response to concerns from citizens to get eyes on that. That shows that he cares, that he's committed to it. So he gets high marks for me there. And so here's where my, at the end of the day, my ratings fall. You know, if I were to vote in this election, which I can't because I, it's, the primary is closed, so I can't vote in it. For, I would vote for Axel Ebermann. I would not vote for Derek Thompson. And I don't know, I think I would still struggle over whether to vote for Lauren Carter or Javon Boxill. I think I would, so today is Sunday, I would, if I were voting, I would be voting on Tuesday. What I would do is I would talk to people. I'd say, this is what I'm thinking. I'm not sure what to do and hear what other people think about it. If at the end of the day, I didn't have any other compelling reason to, to, to move from this. So say, for example, to vote for Javon Boxill over Lauren Carter, I would probably vote for Lauren Carter. I will, so let me stop sharing that. So that's, that's how, that's the process I use. Maybe it might sound like it's elaborate and time-consuming. Certainly I put effort in, into the time to figure out how to fix my belief about candidates who, who are running to be in charge of our so-called democracy. I, you know, I think that's what it means to be civically responsible, to, to study issues, to watch carefully, to read and to write. I think that's important to do. So thanks for listening.